All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'll go ahead and call to order the March 16th, 2015 Salisbury City Council work session. We do have a full agenda today and as my council colleagues know, I will be leaving today at around 3:30. And if we don't have a quorum, we'll be cutting the meeting short at that time. With that, I want to go ahead and get us started, but what we're going to do is make a slight change to our agenda here and move the community garden lease agreement for the Camden Newtown neighborhood forward. So I'm going to start by asking Mr. Molds, Public Works Director, to come forward and then, Mike, as you want to call our friends from the Camden neighborhood forward, you can do that.
At the request of the administration, we had met with some representatives from a group that wishes to establish a community garden over by the Newton tot lot. There's a vacant piece of property over there that hasn't been developed for anything. And as a result of that, we had some, a meeting with Martin and sat down and went through different criteria that, of what they were thinking in terms of how this community garden might appear. We provided you with a memo that kind of outlined the discussions I had with Martin, I guess back on December, and the desire that they have, they would like to try to get the garden going this spring so that they can get interest and get planting. Following that discussion, we helped out with doing a little sketch of a layout to kind of show what was being conceived there, raised beds, irrigation issues that they want to try, how they would go about doing that. And as a result of that layout, the mayor had us advance that to have the city solicitor together a draft lease. So it's kind of where we're at in terms of wanting to see if council wants to move this forward into a, developing the lease agreement for, for this project and have it move forward. At this point then, I'd like to maybe turn it over to Martin. He's got a nice presentation here I think he'd like to give.
Mr. Hutchison, can you join us? And anyone else you want to bring forward, feel free.
Well, I do want to make note of the section over here. I think all of you, raise your hand if you're here in support of the community garden.
Excellent.
And I am expecting a neighbor also from this lot to come and join us, and he did want to speak if he comes, but I'm not sure. He said he was going to be here at 1:30, and it's past 1:30. We are delighted to be in front of you all. It feels like it's been a long time in coming. Appreciate the work that we've done with Mike and our meeting with Mayor Irtin. We have a desire to see that vacant lot turn into something positive for the community that lives there around it. And it's, it's about six or seven blocks from our ministry centers. I represent Community of Joy Church as the pastor there, and I'm also here really representing a collective of churches called the Corner Church Collective. That is made up of our neighbors Bethany Lutheran Church, the Beacon of Light Seventh Day Adventist Church, which meets at Bethany Lutheran, and the Restoration Project that also met at Bethany Lutheran and now has moved to Asbury United Methodist. The four churches have formed this collective and are interested in doing some positive things in the neighborhood, and this is the one project that we pitched to our membership that got the most interest. I have 18 people from that collective that are eager and waiting for the yes and the signature on the lease to begin constructing and building and working, planting and working this garden for the benefit of our neighbors. We did give you a presentation that Casey Martin is here, and she has worked with me on this, as well as Heather Martin, the three Martins. We represent the community group called Green SBY, and that is not a political group. That is a group that takes its task as wanting to encourage urban agriculture and community gardening. And they have decided that they want to make this their inaugural project in the city, one of two. The other one will be a herb garden downtown that is in the works as well. But today we want to talk about this. Some short-term goals that we have, you can see there on the front, to develop this vacant city lot into a community garden that will provide good, healthy food options for our neighbors. We also are interested in teaching sustainable environmental skills to children and families in the neighborhood. In long-term, we're interested in partnering with Pinehurst Elementary and maybe St. Francis Desales School to use the garden as an outdoor classroom and to consider using the produce as an educational, nutritional, educational piece. Community of Joy has been a faith-based partner of Pinehurst Elementary School for the past seven, eight years, and they are eager to join us in this venture and use it in any way that they can in their educational endeavors there. I haven't talked to St. Francis, but after talking to Chief Duncan, she strongly encouraged me to talk to them and thinks they will be in favor of it as well. The next page, just some, how we do it, we would like to use a trickle irrigation system to use as little water as possible and to be as effective and not wasteful of water. We will oversee it, the Corner Church Collective, though because we're not a legal entity, Community of Joy will be signing the lease if you agree to that, and Community of Joy will be the body that provides the insurance coverage as well. You can see an approximate budget. We have a phase one and phase two. If you see in our schematic that we took off of what Mike did for us, the non-shaded boxes of the garden are areas that will develop in phase two, and we'll have to see how the shade, the sun falls on that area. The house to that side will obstruct some sun, and so there may be some areas we can't grow certain kinds of vegetables in because of that. So you can see phase one and phase two. In my meeting with Chief Duncan, she suggested a dog bag station would be a wonderful thing because currently that lot is used as a place for dogs to relieve themselves, and no one seems to be able to pick it up, although I'm guessing there are some that do pick it up. But she thought if we provided that and provided the bags, that that might encourage that to happen. We have been awarded two $1,000 grants already, and we'll give the money back if you say no and don't sign a lease, but we're hoping that won't be the case, and we're ready to go to start getting some more. Potential partnerships, you can see there in that bubble, SU Environmental Studies, we have represented here today. I have a Boy Scout who's preparing to be an Eagle Scout that would like to be a part of this project. I've talked to the temple, and they're eager to allow us to park on their lot when we're gardening so that we don't obstruct the street in any way. Rabbi Beinstock was very happy to have his lot used that way, and we have some neighbors that we've talked to that are eager to have a lot. The one Martin that is not here is Heather Martin, and she sent a letter, and I'd like to read that at this time for you guys. She says, "Members of council, my name is Heather Martin, and I manage the Healing Rose Community Garden at the MAC Center in Salisbury. My absence today does not reflect my level of belief in this project, and I would like to talk briefly about the benefits I've seen from community gardens. Our garden began as a part of a project called Life After Breast Cancer: Return to Functional Independence, in order to address a need among breast cancer patients in our area. Our members represent different socio-economic statuses, ethnicities, and varying levels of health and mobility, but what we have found is that in, in a garden, there is something for everyone. In our first season, we hoped to not only teach home gardening skills, but to give women a place to grow their own food, a place to commune with each other, and a place to appreciate their surroundings. We achieved much more than that. We saw a level of empowerment in them that we did not anticipate in our first growing season. Many of them were fiercely dedicated not only, to not only their own garden, but to the other women who had fought the same battle and were seeing a light at the end of the tunnel. Specifically, one participant who had developed diabetes post-cancer went from four shots of insulin a day to zero as a result of changing her diet and eating produce from the garden. From what I have seen, a garden is a perfect analogy for life. To nurture the growth of a plant from a seed to plate is one of the most satisfying feelings to experience. It is my hope that we can bring that same experience to the Camden Avenue neighborhood through a community garden." Thank you, Heather Martin. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Well, I think before we have questions, we do have one-
Sorry.
Request for comment, that's all right. And Mike, I do, if there's anything else that you want to add sort of from the city's perspective, I'd like to hear that now too.
Okay. As part of the discussion is that we proposed a lease where the collective would be responsible for the property as defined, and the lease references a plaque that shows that area on that. That includes mowing of the grass strips in between the plots, taking care of removal of any organic material, things like that. It was one of the reasons why the shed was there, so they could store a mower and take care of utensils and things like that. So the other thing that the, the city Department of Public Works was offering to do was to extend the existing water service. There's a yard hydrant there at the tot lot, and we could just tie into that and extend that around to them when put a meter pit in there for their water use that they would need. Obviously, that's important for the community garden to proceed, but then obviously that would be billed to the group as far as usage. But with the drip irrigation system, that will significantly keep their costs down, I think.
And I understand usage would be a water-only usage, as in there's no sewer there?
Correct, correct. So there's that. One of the things, we had the draft done by the city solicitor, we are proposing that be a three-year lease, the reason that with the investment they're going to make in the infrastructure there, we figured that'd be reasonable rather than a one-year lease in terms of going ahead.
And it's my hope that that's renewable?
Yes.
I would think so. Because it's a sizable investment that we're considering, wanting to make, because we're not going to use the ground there, we're going to make above ground so that we can deal with any contamination issues that are there.
Excellent.
The only other thing I would note is that we'll be coming before you as part of our Maryland Sustainable Communities requirements, forming a green team, and we need to develop points to become a certified Maryland Sustainable Community. One of the points that we get for that is having a community garden.
It was also in the Heal City Resolution that we passed that we would create and promote community gardens and urban agriculture to support both healthy, healthy eating and to support workforce development, green workforce development in our communities. I do have one request for comment. I'd like to invite Mr. Bill Nelson to come forward. If you wouldn't mind coming to the podium and sharing your thoughts with us. Yes, sir.
I'm Bill Nelson, and I work for Salisbury University Environmental Studies, but I'm actually mostly here just as a member of the community, and I think more importantly, somebody who's taught for over 30 years to kids of all ages. The first, I have just a couple of brief things to say. The first thing was when, when I first heard that about Heather Martin being involved in this project, I thought, what a wonderful opportunity for the city because she has so much expertise that she brings with her. You guys all know about her father's J. Martin's Providence Organic Farm. What I found out by working with them for the last seven years is that whenever there's a computer problem or any kind of budget problem or anything like that to be worked out, it's Heather who fixes things. So she has this phenomenal expertise both in things agriculture and growing things and also in managing a farm, and I think she's just the perfect person, and boy, what an opportunity. The other thing is, as a teacher, I've been at Salisbury University for five years now, and in my travels over the last 20 years, I've noticed, you know, European communities have had community gardens for decades, and same thing when I lived in Japan in the 80s. And they're basically pretty visible manifestations of a thriving, involved community, and I'm very excited at the possibility of Salisbury getting the same thing, partly because increasingly when college students are looking at Salisbury University prospective students, they're, they're asking, how green is it? And they're asking not just how green is the university, but how green is the community? And this would be a really visible thing. Well, we have a community garden, that would be a really great plus for the university and for the city. And then on the other end, when the kids are graduating, I think it will go a long way towards attracting and keeping students as well. Again, in my five years, I see students fall in love with the eastern shore, want to live on the eastern shore, but move on because as they say, and this is not fair, they say there's nothing going on here, there's a lot going on here, and there's much for you guys to be committed for, but that's their perspective. And for instance, with the recent decisions about the bike lanes downtown, I know you guys had an awful lot of conflicting things to deal with, but the kids saw that as well. You know, they're not having bike lanes, and it's not like they're not having bike lanes, so I'm moving on, but it's one factor in their overall impression. And again, you know, having a bike-friendly, people-centric, community-invested area is going to get more of our Salisbury University students to stay here, which I think will be a great thing. And then speaking as a teacher, I've, I've started high school programs, I've changed middle school programs, I've had, as I said, 30-plus years of experience in the classroom, but the most useful things I've ever done is start gardens at schools. If there's, if you want to get the marginally interested or not interested kids hooked on something, have them grow a radish or a head of lettuce, and they will start to care about it. And once they start to care about it, you can teach nutrient cycling, you can teach, you know, the nitrate cycle, you can teach anything you want to put on our standardized test, but until you get them hooked, they're not going to, they're not going to want to learn. So it's, it's probably the most direct way to get kids to care, and that's very exciting to me too. And then finally, I think there's a synergy. I think we're sort of at a crossroads. There's Priscilla's Stasher Trash Program, there's Bike Salisbury's been very active, and then Green Salisbury now, and we're actually all meeting next Monday night to brainstorm and find ways that we can work together and help, help each other out and promote each other, and I just, I hope this community gardens piece goes through. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. Tell your students not to, not to fear, we'll be adding over five miles of dedicated bike lanes this year. And how many bike racks on Main Street alone?
Forty.
Forty bike racks on Main Street alone, just those, just those two pieces of Main Street. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Nelson. Questions from council?
I had, one question was asked about the water, the trickle thing. I didn't know what you meant, because when we did a garden, we had the fire hydrant.
That's watering.
Yeah. They turned it on for us. Police officer did that. The potential partnerships, I wanted to suggest a Parkside School because of the agriculture program they have there. And the kids have to do community service, and that could be a community service project, or any, any middle or high school.
Sure, sure.
Yeah. As far as partnerships, and that is in my district, the tot, so when you first start, let me know.
Absolutely.
I do believe in community gardens. As I was telling you before the meeting, we did one around the county, Church Street, Pittsville, West Side of Bend County, because I've worked with Lower Shore Anger Network. So I see the importance of the community gardens.
In the 80s.
In the 80s, yes, in the 80s.
So it's, it has a history in our community.
In the 80s, yes, in the 80s.
It's time for a resurgence.
It is, it is.
The only question that I had was in 2G about the insurance limitations or the requirements. The $2 million seems a little high. I know that other people that we've dealt with found that insurmountable.
I, I thought so too when I first looked at it. I placed an email into our insurance agent last week and didn't get a response, so today I called, and I talked to a customer service rep, and she pointed out that our current policy is $6 million aggregate and $1 million each occurrence. The only place we're lacking is the $10,000 that you require for the medical, we're five, and so she's going to quote me. I thought I'd have that before today, but I don't have it. She didn't think it would be a problem to add that to our existing policy. We had talked about this with them previously. We had wanted to do it at the apartment complex across the street from our facility, and we couldn't get the owners there to, to work with us on that, so we put that on hold. So I'm in the process of trying to see how much it's going to cost. I don't think it'll be a whole new policy. I think we'll be able to add the city and have, and comply with, with your requests, but I don't have that information right now.
As we move forward, I'd be interested in hearing, before we bring this to legislative session, or when we bring it to legislative session, if we do, I'd be interested in hearing what the cost to you would be.
Sure.
If it is $10,000 in medical expenses.
I've asked her to give me both the, the current breakdown of adding it as our policy exists and the current, the breakdown to add it to come under your all's guidelines for the lease.
That's the only, that's the only one to me that, that makes sense, the, you know, $1 million each occurrence and, and $300,000 in fire damage.
Sure.
As an aggregate policy for, you know, for you, the tenant, that makes sense, but, you know.
Sure.
If everything burned down on that property.
There's nothing, there's nothing to burn down, really.
Probably some delicious vegetables.
Right.
So I, I think, I just want to know what the impact to you is going to be if that's going to be our requirement, and I assume that's standard, Mark, is that where that number came from?
I didn't draft the original version of this, so I'm not certain where it came from. I don't know if it came from, is that a requirement of Public Works, or what did we?
No, we didn't, that was-
Okay. We just pulled it off of prior, probably the all-for-prior agreement, so.
Let's do this.
I think we could be flexible on that. That, that piece right there is, is for medical expenses, for example, if someone brings their children onto that property and they fall in a hole.
Sure.
That would pay the medical expenses of the child.
Sure. You know, let's put a bookmark in that.
Absolutely.
But I think if council can remain flexible enough to reduce that to $5,000, if, before you change anything-
Sure.
Find out what it would cost.
But it may be $10,000 is worthy.
And it may be.
Right. So I'm getting it quoted both ways, and I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to add it to our policy and not have to do a new policy.
Okay.
If so, if we have to do a new policy, I did look at the American Community Garden Association policies that they make available.
Yeah.
And they're about $500 or less, according to their website. I didn't join, I'm not a member, it's $100 a year to join, and so I didn't do that, and so I can't see the fine print, but theirs is a million-dollar aggregate, and I don't know how the rest breaks down because they don't show that.
Okay.
I requested a quote from them, and I haven't gotten anything, so I don't know where that's going to be.
Well, we've, we've got a few days to-
Sure.
Do some further research, so let's do that and-
I'm on it.
We'll come back and discuss. Just a couple other things, you know, insurance, I had that question as well, and water. As I understand it, no additional lighting is proposed, is that correct?
At this point, there's no electric on, on the property as far as what's-
There's not a streetlight?
Well, there's streetlights there on hand, but they don't quite line up. My suggestion I had with Martin was maybe work out, because you've got those parking lots on either of those properties, maybe working out something where they could share the cost of a streetlight that would be a flat rate Del Marva, and that light could shine over on both of them.
Okay. Let's look at that as a future option.
We could do that. The chief and I talked about the possibility of some solar lighting from the ground. She was real, she didn't want to see above lighting that would be problematic for the neighbors. She didn't want to cause that kind of infringement on their properties, so she was recommending the, something on the ground.
Sure.
But we have, we don't have any plan for any at present, but we can do that if, if that's needed. The other thing I do want to call to your attention, out of my meeting with the chief, which is different from the drawing that Mike did, she asked for us to add an extra foot between the beds so that as they're patrolling down Camden Avenue, they can see between the beds driving by, and she asked us to come off of the property line an extra foot on the north side, so instead of 11 feet, it would be 12. And I think, I think that's what Casey put in, if you look on the back of ours, we changed ours to reflect that, to be what Chief Duncan asked of us. And we are not putting benches in at present, we had originally talked about that, and if we did, she asked that that would be a double bench with a armrest in the middle, so it couldn't, couldn't be used as a bed.
Right. Well, so, look, this is fantastic. I really appreciate you giving us a kind of a concise, clear package to walk away with.
Kudos to Casey.
I know. So kudos, kudos to Casey, kudos to you, kudos to Heather, kudos to Priscilla, and thank you, Bill, and thank you, Ray. Thank you all for being here, and thanks for, you know, being supportive of something that not only will provide access to healthy food, but also workforce development, neighborhood revitalization, bacon lot greening, this is a win-win-win-win-win-win-win.
I think so.
And, you know, yeah, it's one of those quintuple bottom line sort of things. You can't, you can't, you can't lose. This is great.
And the cool thing is, if I may, one more thing, the neighbor that I was expecting to come, didn't come, he, when I talked to him about it, he and I have been friends for a number of years, and I didn't realize that, he said to me, he said, "I, I have a passion for this, and I've wanted to see that lot developed in this way for 10 years, and I just haven't had the, the get-up-and-go to make it happen," and he said, "I'm thrilled that you're, you're pushing it to make it happen," and he said, "I want to get involved." So I don't, I don't know why he's not here today, something must have come up, because he was, he said, "I will speak because I have that much passion for it."
Well, we hope he's okay, and we hope he continues to be a supportive part of the progress there. I'm looking forward to moving this forward on our agenda.
Me too.
Is there-
As soon as possible.
And I want to say one more thing, Weed and Seed Program, it was one of the ideas we had from a gentleman that came down for environmental design, was community gardens, so this is fulfilling one of the Weed and Seed's dreams.
Good.
Which was part of that.
Good.
So I supported it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you. Well, now return to our regular scheduled programming.
Already in progress.
Yeah, already in progress. Mr. Corddry, you want to come join us for the capital improvement program? Thank you all.
Hey, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The agenda for today, we have a brief overview, and then we're going to bring the police and fire and parking, public works, department heads to discuss what we've projected in 16th CIP, and they'll, they'll answer any questions you have about 17 and 20. The capital improvement plan before you today is for a five-year period, beginning in FY16 and ends in FY20, just so all stakeholders understand, it's a financial and resource planning tool, and it does not represent the final budget, and it doesn't indicate there's a commitment to proceed with the project. We employed some additional framework this year for reporting the CIP. In your packets, you'll notice they're divided into two sections. First is the proposed CIP, it's what we're bringing to you to pass, and then there's what was requested by the department heads in the Appendix Act.
Thank you very much for that.
Well, it's at your request that we, we, A, give you a view as to what was requested versus what we could fund based on some framework, and the requested CIP is very similar to the summaries you've seen in previous years where it has a summary by program, detailed project listing by program, summary by funding source, and detailed project listing by funding source. The proposed section is just a summary where we've identified what we could fund based on the constraints that we've employed for having some framework, and I'll explain more about that as we go forward, but before I do, you'll notice that in the proposed summary, there's a, a reference number that has an underline. If you click that, it'll take you directly to the request page with all the project details. So we can thank Chris for that nice little gimmick, and if you click on the city seal on the page that you go to, it takes you back to where you came from. So in that document, it makes the navigation pretty easy. So in previous years, the capital improvement plan included all the projects requested, and last year, council noticed that, that, that they had the concern that it really wasn't as good of a plan as it could be because it didn't give us a clear view as to what wasn't feasible to be funded. So this CIP plan employs some framework that says the general fund revenue constraint was 1.6 million, and our bonded debt constraint is our financial policy that says that we can, we shouldn't use more than 10% of our expenditures in debt service. We came up with the 1.6 million to use as a, both as a target and as a limit. It's, it's important to fund enough CIP sufficiently that's going to prevent us from having an unfunded liability. So if you don't fund your CIP, obviously you're just kicking the can down the road and you're, you're creating an unfunded liability. So it's a target in that way, it's a limit in the sense that if, if you made it 10 million and you can't support 10 million, then it's unrealistic. So we've, we've, we've produced both the target and a limit. The 1.6 million was derived in part by searching for an amount that was healthy enough, that would produce funding, an adequate number of the important projects over time. Okay, gave you some summaries of the general fund. This first summary is showing that of the requested amount of 42.4 million, we were able to fund using those constraints, 32.9 million or 77%. What's before you, the CIP plan would fund all of the water, parking, and marina funds requested. What's before you, the CIP plan would fund all of the water, parking, and marina funds requested. Uh, we have a, uh, CIP by funding source that shows the total for each, uh, funding source. And this slide is showing that at the year, going into the year two thousand sixteen, that thirty-two percent of our debt service capacity, uh, is, uh, out there to, to, to plan for, and that this plan takes us down to eight percent by the year two thousand nineteen. So in, in dollars, you can see we went from three hundred and thirty thousand of, of additional debt service in sixteen to a hundred and forty-eight to two hundred and one, to five hundred and twenty-six thousand in nineteen, bringing us to a, um, projected debt service you, of three point two six million out of a capacity of three point five million, or that's where we wind up at eight percent. Okay, a similar slide for the water sewer fund, showing the, uh, CIP by funding source. Uh, it's important to note that the water sewer fund appropriated about seven million dollars last year using funds on hand, meaning, uh, we paid in cash. This, this, uh, CIP plan includes eight point two million to be funded out of funds on hand, out of a total of twenty million. So that's fifteen point two million of the twenty-seven point five million in total projects that are proposed to be funded from cash. So this has provided a very significant, uh, debt avoidance. So it's kind of a great story here, as far as being able to fund so much without debt.
And we had a portion of that because of?
Waste water treatment. Yeah, last year, that's seven million. But this last, uh, this plan here is, is digging into our, um, impact fund and our capacity fund, where that we have, uh, two funds, ones for maintenance of infrastructure and the others for, uh, projects that increase capacity. So that fifteen point two, um, or that eight point two is using some combination of funds out of those, uh, those two funds. Uh, moving on, this is, uh, just, just to, uh, touch upon the waste water treatment plant. Uh, we've, we've seen this before where that, for, looking at the amortization of the new waste water treatment plant loan, the first eight years would only require a hundred and fifty thousand dollar annual, um, payment. And that beginning in year nine is when we amortize the remaining balance over the remaining period of, uh, twenty years. So the net result is, is that our, uh, to, the chart to the left shows the, um, that the subtotal, which is our existing debt service, plus the waste water treatment plant, without, without CIP included first in that subtotal, that we're, we're, we're in the range of four point four to four point eight million through that period. And, uh, more significantly, the CIP brings another million dollars of debt service, uh, taking us to five point six in years eighteen through twenty-five. But, uh, again, the terms that we, uh, were able to get for the, uh, from MDE produced, uh, a little impact by, by this, uh, by this one. Uh, this is the parking fund, where we can see the, uh, amount of CIP by funding source. So now we're ready to move along into the, uh, projects, and the first one is the police department. I think, uh, Dave was gonna stop by and give us a report. Afternoon, Colonel.
Afternoon.
All yours.
All right. Okay, as, as we can see, um, just updated these numbers to make sure I was absolutely right yesterday, and the influx of, uh, the newer cars over the last couple of years has really made a dramatic impact on our fleet as far as the quality of, uh, what we have on the street and the, uh, safety factors as they are emergency vehicles and the, uh, operation of those vehicles under, um, stressful conditions. City driving would be one of them, and then, of course, um, it, occasions being driven, uh, contrary to motor vehicle law to, uh, to go to certain calls and traffic stops and so forth, so... Last year, um, for vehicles over a hundred and fifty thousand miles was eight vehicles. Now we're down to four, uh, vehicles over a hundred and fifty thousand miles that at a point here, um, that if, after we get the vehicles in, as we're, we get new vehicles in, they'll be surplused out. Uh, we currently have six vehicles that are, that were just surplused. We'll be trading those. We have, uh, six marked units, uh, with a hundred thousand miles that are fair to average condition, and then we have seventeen vehicles that are currently assigned to patrol. Where we're running into a little bit of a snag now is we have, uh, two, two patrol vehicles that were still actually, that were in the FY fourteen budget that we're still waiting for, uh, from, from the, uh, actually the installation company that's putting the equipment in. We had some equipment on those two vehicles, um, that some of the equipment that came in was, was, was the incorrect equipment that was actually supposed to go in those vehicles, so... We believe they're gonna be on the lot in the next week. It wouldn't be until the past of this morning, so this is real-time information. We have, uh, fifteen vehicles for this current year budget FY fifteen that have been ordered. We expect those here in the next few months, hopefully, if everything goes right. Uh, and we did order, uh, what we, what we've done, uh, is now we're, we're in really last year's model, so what we're looking at here is, um, there was really not too much change in the model, model of the vehicle as far as, uh, as far as the ally of the vehicle, interior and so forth. And those vehicles are already in the state, so what we ran into a problem is, is I think council's well aware of, is that we were running into a problem with these vehicles actually by the time we ordered them, actually getting them on the lot outfitted, because what we found out was the vehicles were actually being assembled in Australia, and then they were being shipped, uh, to the United States, uh, from the San Diego area, Los Angeles area, that, that area. And then they were being shipped, uh, west to east, and it was taking a outrageous amount of time to get the, uh, vehicles in, and then, of course, equipped and so forth, so... By purchasing the previous shares model, um, that's cut down on that time lag quite a bit, so I can tell you. So for FY sixteen, um, we are requesting five vehicles, and, um, for the FY sixteen budget, and then we'll be rotating those vehicles out. We have a rotation schedule. Um, normally what we do there is, uh, not necessarily buy them by year, but what we look at, uh, is we also look at, has the vehicle been involved in multiple motor vehicle accidents? Are there just certain things about a certain vehicle that just, although it may be newer, it's had, uh, quite a few issues, whether it be engine or, uh, transmission or so forth, and we may look at vehicle that maybe is not quite as old. We may just rotate that out earlier. So we look at the maintenance schedule of vehicles quite, quite a bit to determine which vehicles may need to go. So we may all, we may actually have an older vehicle or two on the fleet that, uh, we're keeping because it's just, uh, it's just been, uh, one of the better vehicles, and perhaps one of the new vehicles could rotate, so... And that this will, uh, this will enable us to also increase our take-home vehicle program, which, uh, we actually did just roll out, uh, four additional take-home vehicles. Um, what we did is we, uh, examined here recently, uh, the amount of vehicles we're ordering, the matter of vehicles we need to surplus based on, just getting rid of them based on, they're just, the fact is, they're just not safe to operate in this emergency capacity. And they're upwards, they were, most of them were upwards of a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty thousand miles. The maintenance work we're putting into them just didn't, uh, it just isn't, it didn't make, um, legislature sense to, to save much more money for those vehicles, so we'll be trading six out. And there were four that, uh, we deemed, uh, in, in good enough quality to, to wear the, uh, for officers within the city, uh, to, uh, extend as a staple cars for the, the native, and to have those in the neighborhood.
Colonel, my, my only question about the cars is, um, regarding the patrol rifle program. Um, do we have any sort of mount, uh, any sort of bracket, uh, that's-
The, uh, vehicles, the, uh, increases are actually, uh, there's not a, there's not a mount per se for them, but they are actually, uh, uh, there's a cable, they're cable lock to the, uh, to the, in the trunk of the car.
Okay.
Um, so we, with everything, with all the other equipment in the cars, we weren't, we were not in the, uh, uh, we, we do have for the shotgun, we have a mount.
You do have an, in, in cabin mount?
For the shotgun. For the patrol rifle, it comes in a case. We actually have a case. It's on wheels for, for the, for siphoning those in and out. And due to the size of the, uh, the equipment, everything that goes with it, we found that there just wasn't room in patrol cars for the, into the interior of the patrol, patrol car for those, those weapons, so... We did, uh, after some research, uh, quite a bit of research, found that our best alternative with the vehicles that we have is to cable lock those inside.
Okay. Thank you.
I did not mention that, I just wanted to throw in there, that these vehicles, again, what we found to be, uh, in the last two years, we found to be, uh, uh, much better for us is, and also speeding up the deployment of the vehicles, is to purchase the vehicles at the cost with all the equipment in the vehicles, such as the emergency lights, sire box, uh, the laptop, the, uh, MDT laptops, so the officers can transmit, of course, back to headquarters, and also the, uh, ABS and car camera.
Other questions? Colonel, thank you. Appreciate it. I would just ask, and I appreciate, uh, department representatives being here today, I would just ask that you all come back to legislative session. We discuss this again. I, I think that's where we'll have the majority of the questions. Thank you. I appreciate it. And I really say that in the interest of time today. Chief, how are you?
Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, by way of introduction of the, uh, FY sixteen CIP, uh, project for replacement of, uh, three ambulances, I know that we have spent some time with council before discussing the efficacy of replacing three ambulances at one time versus, uh, replace buying one a year. So I'd just like to review that real quickly. Um, replacing one ambulance a year, uh, i- is an actual in, increase of cost overall, over a five-year period of a, of a little over half a million dollars of expense that's unnecessary. We, we feel very comfortable in the life expectancy of the frontline ambulances being five years. And in this, in this particular plan, which is presented, uh, replacing three frontline ambulances does two things for us. A, it standardizes, it does three. It standardizes that frontline units is all one make, model, shape, size. It, it makes us more efficient in our service as our employees transition from one station assignment to another. Two, it, it, it's the economy of scale for purchasing those three units, uh, as I talked about over, instead of buying one per year, which is, which is a lot cheaper, but it actually costs you more money over the extended period of time. And three, it, uh, it extends the service, uh, life of the current fleet by an additional five years. And what, what I'd like, how I'd like to explain that is, is, is our plan, uh, and when fully executed, and by the way, this will be the, if, if, if approved, this will be the first year we can fully execute buying three medic units, is to have our medic units serve on the front line, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five for a five-year period, which we're very comfortable is the maximum front-life uni, or, uh, life expectancy of those units. But we're also just as equally comfortable that take, replacing those three units every five years and moving those existing units into a reserve fleet or, or a back-line fleet can extend their life expectancy by that, by another five years. So the, the plan would be to rotate those units every five years. In doing so, you take the life expectancy of a vehicle from five to seven years on the front line to a maximum of ten years. So we believe, based on those three things, efficiency and economy of, of, economy of scale of purchasing, efficiency in use, and maximizing life expectancy, along with the cost savings of, of purchasing three units at one time over, over the, what was the pre-existing plan of one unit every year, uh, is, is worthy of our endeavor to, to pursue.
I certainly understand that. Um, I think one thing that we should consider, though, is that we make provisions that we are ready at that five-year mark to buy those three ambulances, because we've seen situations, we got into this situation because that mark came and we weren't able to do it. And then we had vehicles that were past their expected life and their, any reasonable expectation, and we got in a bind. That's what I don't wanna end up with, is where we are behind the curve. The rotation is great. That's the, the point, as long as we make sure that we're ready at that five-year mark to buy three ambulances.
And I will defer to our resident expert of finance, Mr. Cordry, but, uh, in my, in my opinion, this, this, this initial purchase of three sets us up for avoiding that very situation because, uh, in my, in, in our estimation, they'll be put on a five-year lease, which matches, matches their replacement, uh, program, so that every five years, you're simply rolling forward the existing debt service, uh, which technically would be the same. It's, it'd probably be some increase based on the economy, but essentially, you're not, we're not ever, we're, we're never put back in a position of, uh, can we afford it? If we are doing our very level best to afford it the first time, then we're just simply rolling it over, and it becomes very easy, easy to plan for that in perpetuity. I hope that made sense, what I just said.
It, it did. My question is, um, the termination of the lease, the terms of that, but we'll get into that as we get deeper in the, the individual budgets.
Understood. Mr. Cordry, anything to add to that?
I think the chief just pointed out that it's, it would just be more of the same. By them being on the same cycle, uh, we're just continuing to make similar payments. And it, so it reduces any pain that would be otherwise found.
Chief, anything else?
Um, no, I think there's an additional slide, unless you have questions-
Questions about-
Questions about seventeen, uh, moving forward to twenty. Be happy to answer anything you might have.
Seventeen brings up a lot of questions, no doubt. Um, but, uh, I, I guess the only question that I, I would have right now, be prepared to ask, is, do we have any, uh, ongoing private, commercial, or other development on the north end, um, that this facility could be developed in conjunction with? And, and are, and if so, are there any partners who you've begun to work with and communicate with about, uh, appropriate land, you know, and, you know, mobilization costs are, are a big piece of any development project? And, you know, once you start moving dirt, it'd be nice if two of us were moving dirt in concert.
Yeah, I think, I think it's safe to say that, um, the, the, the mayor's office has, has worked with Mr. Jakubiac, who has been, uh, very well established as, is, is negotiating for the city for these kinds of, uh, uh, private, uh, public partnerships. And we have had a, a couple of preliminary conversations, but, but no, nothing, as of yet, has been, has been, uh, pushed forward as a final agreement. We've just been investigating the feasibility of, of various private, public partnerships, uh, to, to the end of, we understand this is what we, this is what we want. Uh, and then how we move it forward would be simply based on Mr. Jakubiac's efforts on the city, acting in good faith on the city's behalf, behalf to negotiate those kinds of private, public partnerships.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Other questions? All right. Chief, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You, too. Ms. Mill? Afternoon?
Good afternoon. For FY sixteen, we have, um, two items for the parking authority. The first one is this, um, multi-cell expansion joint. This is on all the levels of the original garage. It goes from one side of the garage to the other. Uh, the third floor was replaced in two thousand twelve. We need to do the second floor now. This is the, would be the first year of three years that we'd like to have money in the CIP to replace the meters on Main Street as part of the Main Street Master Plan. Um, the bulk of the meters would be purchased in FY sixteen. That would go from Division Street to Route thirteen, and then as the plaza is done, and then as, um, North Division Street is done as well. Um, we're looking to go to a multi-space meter instead of single-head meters to visually clean up the streetscape with the improvements of Main Street Master Plan. Um, this is just one example of such a meter. It's not the meter necessarily that we would use, uh, but the multi-space meters would obviously go beyond coin and, uh, be able to accept credit cards as, and they do become smart meters at that point.
And, and I think, I think it's critical also that we go beyond even credit cards and go to either pay by phone or, you know, I mean, that's, everything seems to be shifting in that direction as well. Um, so whenever that goes out for bid, I hope we're considering that as well.
And we'll take a look at that, too.
Okay.
That may be a separate provider, but a system that would work with multi-space meters.
Okay, okay. So a system-
Ideally, the, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Somebody wouldn't have to run back to the meter or run back to the-
Yes.
They'd get a notification on their phone and, and be able to re-up from there.
And I think, um, another thing that, that I wasn't clear on, um, this is not, uh, included in the original bid package for the Main Street Master Plan.
That's correct.
Okay. We've identified, however, in that plan where multi- We've identified, however, in that plan where multi-space meters would be located, correct?
Approximately, we have. I've spoken to several paystation vendors, we walked Main Street, we looked at the number of spaces, the approximate placement, and while we are, we have talked to AMT about some suggested locations, it's not 100% finalized yet, because there's some thought that this type of meter actually works very well near a light pole for several reasons. Number one, you have your light pole for the added light. Number two, it's a little bit of a safety factor, should a car come a little bit too close to a meter, you actually have the buffer of a pole there. And then you can also use, say, a light pole to put like a banner hanging off of it and say, "Pay here."
Right.
Something, so.
Well, and the power is right there, the access to the power.
Yeah. And, but we are looking at with Public Works to have conduit run and power run, so that all these would be powered and not solely on solar power.
Sure. And installed at the time of development, right?
Yes.
All that would happen simultaneously.
Are there solar-powered models?
Oh, yes, absolutely, and they're much better than what they used to be. We do have a couple down at the, near Brew River in that parking lot right now, but they go through batteries like crazy. It's an older model, cloudy days, but apparently the technology has come a long way, but I just maybe wasn't ready to bank on that yet.
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Yep.
Oops.
Welcome back.
Nice try. These are for the government office building here. The flooring in the basement has already been replaced. We're looking to replace the flooring on the second and third floor. It's carpeting right now, it's a little bit torn up and looking worn, and then also doing the HVAC replacement here in council chambers.
Thank goodness. So is that, is that done as a cost share?
Yes.
With the county?
Yes.
Fifty-fifty?
And that's our half.
Yes, everything on here is our half.
Okay.
And this is all of parking for FY17 to FY20. You'll see the new parking meters for Main Street Master Plan, again, the bulk of it in FY16, and some in FY17 and FY18. Other things in FY17 would be a new parking study for the parking garage. We had the last one done in 2008. They do recommend that be done, you know, maybe every five, seven years, because that's really the study that is a comprehensive look at the parking garage and looks at the structural integrity of the garage.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Last but not least.
Certainly not least.
All right, left click, right click. Okay. All right, the first project we have on the CIP that you have is the Citywide Inlet Net Filters. This is a continuing request project that we've got, and continuing to expand the installation of these facilities at areas where there are potential for trash collection, collecting in the inlets. So purchase there between 10, 12 nets per year, and installing it with our crews doing that. Again, that's something that's, we've had probably the last four years, we've been asking for that.
We've had grant money for that as well, haven't we, Ralph?
We started out our initial inlet filters were with grants, and then in the last few years, it's just been this $10,000 a year out of the general fund.
Are there any more grant opportunities available, do you know?
Yeah, I'm not sure that there are. Oh, I think with the transition with this one, it'll probably be over into the stormwater utility fee, in terms of funding some of this stuff, that we could look at continuing it.
Just out of curiosity, 10 to 12 a year, how many years will it take us to put one in every one?
Oh, a long, long time. Yeah, what we try to do is we target areas that, in particular, like in the downtown area, where you have the potential for that, so we'll evaluate them, as opposed to other areas where you may get into a more residential neighborhood, you don't see as much trash.
Do you have a list of critical ones, or, I'm just curious about the size of the overall project, and if we're hitting 10 or 12 a year?
Sure. Right now, we have about 100 installed, because that initial grant gave us a lot more in the first year, and we target certain areas, so we have maps, and then we bring the manufacturer down, and the 10 to 12 is based on the size. Some of the larger inlets obviously cost more, so we try to see how many we can do in a year, but we have target areas that we're looking at, and kind of just keep going through that list.
Okay.
Yeah, we had a, this is like a, a little list of the downtown, that kind of shows all the inlets, and then this is a little progress map that we put together to show where we did installations. We kind of target those areas that are, where we have some potential for that.
We have a long way to go.
Yeah.
And it's going to take a long time to get there, 10 to 12 a piece.
What is he, do you know the life expectancy on these?
I know we've had some, where we've had some problems with the nets getting overloaded, and some areas where they, where they need to adjust for cleaning them more often, and we've had to have some repairs done on some of them. One of the things we're looking at with our crews, just from a safety aspect, is adapting one of our trucks to have the back frame crane that could use to lift the material out, a lot safer and hopefully less damage to the inlets. But it is something, obviously, you can imagine with the net material, over a period of time, it'll have to be replaced, but you're not replacing the whole thing, just that net.
And the net material, I've forgotten, I thought it was stainless mesh.
It's stainless frame and everything, but the mesh.
Like a charcoal mesh.
Um.
Well, there's a filter inside of it. There's a piece that has the charcoal to remove some pollutants as well, so we have a bunch of those filters that we can wash out and reuse, so we have that piece also, but then the net, I don't think.
I think that's a polyethylene nylon, or something like that, but.
Kind of picturing it now.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, I know what, let you down. There we go. Lefty and righty stuff.
All right, the next project, which you've seen before in previous CIPs, is the Germania Circle Floodreeve Project. That is ongoing in terms of the work and moving ahead with that. You can see the requests there, 1,075,000, about 656,000 of that is what we're looking at with a FEMA grant, that would help towards property acquisition.
And how are we gauging the worth of each property?
We had to have appraisals done, and FEMA will only pay based on the appraised value. So we had appraisals done for all the properties in that area, they have to pay fair market price.
And who were the appraisers?
I believe, we bid those services, and I believe it was McCann and McCain and Associates was the successful vendor, he performed all the appraisals.
I think I'd be interested in seeing what those appraisals are.
Sure.
Next is the Street Reconstruction Program. Again, this is something that appears in our CIP every year, we project what streets are proposing for doing milling and repaving. Along with that, with the projects, we have to perform any curb repairs and ADA ramp improvements. With the Federal Justice Department now, where they used to look at repaving as a maintenance condition, where you didn't have to upgrade to ADA standards in the street, they've changed that interpretation now. That is considered an improvement, and therefore, any projects where we do work on a street, those streets have to be brought up to ADA standards. So those costs that you see there include where we have to install sidewalks, repair curbs, put ADA ramps at the intersections, as well as milling out the existing paving and replacing it with new. And within your packet, there's a list of those streets that the administration, through some initial recommendations we had, identified those streets. So for FY16, it's an ambitious program to do that. As you know, it's one of the biggest things where we get compliments on, is when we can get into a neighborhood and repave their streets.
Do you know how much of that, I was looking for the breakdown in here, how much of that is anticipated to be with highway user revenues, and how much of that is general fund money?
No, don't have the breakdown with that. Obviously, with the cutback in highway user revenues from the state level, we certainly have no problem spending that money and designating it towards that, but we have to make up a big proportion of that.
Right.
Thinking, I can't remember offhand what that number is, but I can get it for you.
I think last year it was around 350,000 was from the HURs, and that money was taken out of the budget this year, but it's been added back in through the Burfa, and that, my understanding, it made it through committee, so.
Yeah, I think last year there was also some additional money that the governor added to that, which we're not getting this year.
No, we are, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, okay, so they did get that in.
They have added that back in.
Okay, good.
So we should be at about the same level as we were last year.
Okay, every little bit helps.
With that added in, it's almost total 700, or 800,000?
I'm sorry?
Including that one-time money last year, it took us to 700 and some, almost 800,000.
800,000.
And we'd be at that same level this year if it holds.
If it holds, if it gets through one more house in a signature, it'll.
Okay. Another continuing request that we have is our curb gutter and sidewalk program, request of $75,000. And you can see the breakdown there, where we budgeted about 50,000 for replacing curb gutter and sidewalk due to condition, worn out, broken up, and utility excavation. And then 25,000 is for curb gutter sidewalk caused by sewer and water excavations, where we have to replace a water service or a sewer line, that the city section is responsible for doing those repairs. We've made some great progress this last year in catching up on a huge backlog we had for a number of years on these projects, so this program's, has been working very well for us. Then we also have our continuing requests that we have for street repairs. These are patching, where we have a section of the road that was cut out, again, for different repairs that we have to do, and that funds those little patching projects that we have, as opposed to the full contract where we have where we're repaving. Next is again, a continuing request that we have for general stormwater repair. We've taken some hits on this one the past couple of years, with the Cody Cox repairs that we had, that utilized a lot of that. Hopefully, we get behind that, and we can start doing some of our other general repair work that we have. As we talked about with the Main Street Master Plan, as you can see, they're dealing with reinforced concrete pipe, and then of course corrugated metal pipe, which over the years has corroded a lot, and we've got to do some replacements there.
Mike, given that the utility fund will be funded during the course of this year, and will exist this year, why would that money come out of the general fund?
At this point, until we get that squared away, and if, remember when we were talking about the stormwater utility as far as generating the money, it'll start July 1st, but the time it takes to get, develop those funds, at this point, I think we were just being conservative in terms of stating that, until we have that fund created, it can always be switched over.
Okay.
But that, it's certainly a possibility as to how we structure setting that up, you know, if we talked about the street sweeping program, possibly transitioning that into a, and different things. So this is also one that could be a candidate for that.
Okay. I would think is best, it would be best if we were taking that fund, those funds from the stormwater utility fund, if at all possible.
Sure.
A question regarding the replacement materials, we see the corrugated pipe there. What are you using now?
The material, we switch it out with, unless there is an issue with inadequate covers, we go with ADS pipe, which is a black polyethylene corrugated type pipe, and then you can actually get it now, where the inside of the pipe is smooth, as opposed to the outside, which is corrugated, and improves the flow characteristics, so I can actually get more capacity.
And the life of that?
We probably haven't seen it whereout yet. It's been around, and it's impervious to most of your fluid, fluids, salt, any type of corrosion, it lasts really good.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
This is a request we've carried on since the Chesapeake Bay Initiative that we've got there. This is, again, is working on the total maximum daily load compliance, where water quality aspects of stormwater, we pursue the projects such as the Market Street Project, it was an example. 200,000 of that, 400,000 is, would be anticipated in terms of applying for grants. And of course, Main Street Master Plan, which we've had several conversations lately about, is the request of 4.1 million. That includes 1.5 and some change in terms of funding from the Water and Sewer Fund for the replacements of water and sewer lines.
Okay.
That's how you get to that total there. Beaver Dam Title Creek, this is a project that we have been making some requests for. As you, I'm sure I've seen, you have the original dam structure, which we were required under our historical easement to rebuild it the way it was, and now we have our temporary dam that's there. That permit has, while we had the permits in hand, we're going to have to get those renewed, but we would like to proceed with getting that project wrapped up. It's kind of been on our radar for quite a while, in moving ahead. And then you have the zoo projects, obviously, these funding sources are donations that would come to that, as donations developed. The Visitor Center Educational Building, which is, as you know, is pretty worn out as it comes, they've actually stopped utilizing that for visitors, it's pretty much just a storage facility. They had a water leak, I think, up in the ceiling, just not recent, or just recently. So that is a well-needed improvement that we want to do there, for bringing a lot more activities to the zoo. And then the other one is the continuation, of course, expansion of the New Australian Wildlife Exhibit, building upon the Wallaby and getting into the Avery.
Can I ask a question about the Visitor Center? Do we have a cost for demolition, at least, if we can't do a rebuild, just the demolition? That really is unsafe.
If we would, I think that's something that Public Works could use with our facilities, we could probably get in there and save some money in terms of bringing it down if we had to. We haven't looked at it in terms of a contract-type price, but that's where I would look at it, to see if, what we could do ourselves to kind of help that move along.
Thank you.
I think, right now, like I said, I think Ralph is using that for storage of stuff, so, but obviously.
They're afraid to even go to bring anything out at this point.
Yeah, right, right.
It's not good.
Could be a nice weekend project, the demolition.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, now we get into some of our vehicles. As we have our leases expire on some of our other vehicle, on our sanitation vehicles, the opportunity is there to go through replacement. This is an automated side loader vehicle, Sand 5, that's 2005, so it's 10 years old. And again, these are not, it's not like you have a Volkswagen Beetle where everybody makes spare parts, these tend to be unique, and then once that model is phased out, the number of replacement parts, you can't exactly go to J.C. Whitney for a replacement, so it gets a little harder, and then you get to the point where you have to get parts machined or do without, and it builds on us. So the lease, that one, just for information, would be around $43,800 for a lease payment that we're programming for that.
Do we have, have we had these long enough to have an idea of which parts were, are the usual suspects that we might order them when we buy the vehicle?
I think we already do with certain things that wear, like gaskets and type of materials that keep up on. As with a complicated piece of equipment like that, there's always that one part that ends up failing, and who knew?
But you made it a hydraulics.
Hydraulics is one, especially with those trucks, I know we had, one of them had a hydraulic hose blew on a particular joint out in the presidential neighborhood, I think, or, no, it was up near the mayor's house, I think we had. And you kind of learn from that one, and educate all the crews that's, when they do their regular checks, to look for that particular fitting as a potential fail point. We've also ordered spill kits for each of the vehicles now, so if they do have those kind of things, as our equipment gets older, to anticipate if something like that happens.
Those pre-flight checks are important.
Exactly. That's kind of the way I was thinking of it, as a fleet pre-flight check. Another lease option, where we have an expiration of a lease in our fleet, is replacement of our dump trucks. These are obviously critical during the recent winter events, because the dump trucks would become equipped with plows and the salt bodies that would slip on the back. The three trucks in the fleet, as noted, is over 10 years old, and a 17 that we're looking to replace is a 1995 vehicle. Lease payment there, we're looking at around $24,700. Our bucket truck, this is another one. Our bucket truck, this is another one we've been limping by with quite some time, it's a two thousand, and we've run into a period of just breakdown after breakdown on this one. Right now, it's up at Sussex Hydraulics up in Delaware, getting hydraulic system fixed. We, at one point, we had, the truck was down and the part we had to get was shipped in from India so we can get the darn thing on the road again. It's very critical, obviously, with our street light repair program, traffic signals, tree trimming, all the event preparations that we get into. It's a very important piece of equipment and it is in a big need of replacement. The lease associated with that was about thirty thousand, five hundred dollars is what we're looking at. I think these are all, Keith had programmed these as seven-year leases, I think, when he gave us the information. All right. As we get into the Water and Sewer Fund now, again, this is a continuing type request that we have is replacement of our distribution piping and valves. Request of seventy-seven thousand, two fifty on that. We have an ongoing program where we replace a lot of our two-inch water services that were galvanized pipe pipelines, and those have just, over the years, we have a lot of calls where we have to go in and replace because those have failed and the water starts bubbling up. So it's just a leftover from way back when, when that was a common way of doing it, and replacing it, obviously, with not galvanized pipe. We're using a plastic pipe in terms of those replacements. So it's a budget that we have in there. We're also running into areas where we need to do valve replacements on our main line while we do exercise our line. An example might be the North Division Street with Isabel, where they did that crossing with the stormwater. When we went out there, the valves operated, as we got down to it, found out that they weren't seating, we ended up breaking the stem off of one of them. So we've had to do some replacement valves in certain areas as these valves age. So that's where that funding is for. Our elevated water tank maintenance, from discussions Amanda and I've had with our water people, we've switched that over to ongoing every two-year program where we were used to be asking for about fifty thousand every year. I questioned that and we've also, as a result of those discussions, we've switched companies and they're gonna do more of an analysis in terms of reviewing that, what needs to be done year per year so that we can make decisions, inform decisions on whether we need to be cleaning the interior more frequently, or, as I expect, less frequently, and also assessing the life expectancy is when these tanks need to be replaced. And obviously, we've got a new tower that we've got to take care of and the investment in those, particularly when you have to repaint a tank, that can be quite expensive.
Let me bring this up now, just so we have it out in the public, but some months ago I asked you about finding about regulations for cell phone and other antennas, antennae, if you will, on water towers. And your, the result that you found was that there are no regulations that prohibit it?
It's pretty much what we decide as the owner of the tower, what would go on there. And the regulations of whoever wants to put what on the tower in terms of FCC as far as, you know, the electronic signals and whatnot, so they don't interfere with each other.
So here we have an opportunity to have an, let me put the word incredible on it, revenue source here. I mean, we're talking half a million dollars probably for if we rent out enough cell tower space on these, on these, on these water towers.
Yeah, and to be honest, most of these cell companies, when they go around looking for sites, that's one of the first things they're looking for. I've been involved in several times where different tanks, you get approached by a cell company, they'll come in and put the infrastructure and negotiate a lease, and then potentially what happens is that you get another cell company will also come in and add to those towers.
So from the city side, can we get mobilized on that, on that concept and start selling the space?
Well, like, I guess what I'm saying is mostly when they go down and they do these surveys as far as where a cell tower needs to be done, they're way ahead of us in terms of what they want, in terms of needs. Because for them, it's going to be a lot cheaper and faster for them to mount their antenna on our tower than it is for them to try to develop a site with their own property and their own tower.
Oh, sure.
So I think if there was a need or demand for a cell service, somebody'd be knocking on our door. All right, this is a continuing project that we submit as we gradually go through. The city has forty-six pump station sites and gradually over a period of time is the installation of communications gear that would provide timely alarm condition and equipment conditions as well as flows that could be monitored remotely so that if we do have a problem with the pumps, one, we can respond to it before an overflow condition occurs, because we always have a backup pump there, and avoid those type of flooding type conditions that we got to deal with. So we've got, the funding, I think we've got twenty stations done, four programmed for FY fifteen, and over the five years, we want to do sixteen more. And I think it's a really good investment. Replacement of the park well two A with well two B, this is a previous request we've made. Well two A was a nineteen seventy-three era well. It's through, the inspection was done five years ago, the, it's in bad condition. It's a lot cheaper just to drill a new well adjacent to it rather than trying to replace the old well and go through that. So we've moved that ahead in terms of getting a new well put in for that site. There's another one where we've had on our radar is the roof replacements for the park plant. As it's noted there, the, we have a Maryland Historic Trust, so as a result of any improvements there, they have to be historically accurate. So as a result, we'll have copper downspout replacement and tile roofs that have to be put in to do that. You can see that's an eighty-seven-year-old building, but we have to go through that process. And that is, that's for design, isn't it, Amanda? Or is that construction?
It's, most of it's construction. There was about twenty-two thousand, five hundred for design and about a hundred and forty thousand for construction.
Also at the park wastewater treatment plant, the high-service pumps, this is design funding for study to evaluate improving the pumping efficiency at the park plant. As you might recall, with the SU Tower went in, our hydraulic pressure with, throughout the city improved, and we need to kind of do some modifications there with the pumps at the park plant to get, to overcome that additional head. So we're kind of limping by with what we've got, but that'll be the design associated with looking at that study. The park wastewater, or park water treatment plant roof, I'm sorry, the finished water storage, you can see the picture there, it's a ground storage facility. We need to do some renovation there. The age of the facility, there's some metal work that's in there that's corroded and you can see the ladder there in the smaller picture, wouldn't be safe getting in there. We use scuba divers when we do the inspections on those facilities, but this would also be design work to look at replacing those facilities.
What is the capacity of that?
I think it was five.
Yeah, I believe that one's five hundred thousand.
And is it necessary?
It, yes.
In the big scheme of things?
With the part, because it's right next to the park plant, it serves as a reservoir of finished water for backwashing and doing the operations of treatment out there.
Okay, I understand.
This is something that is new that came out of the discussions with the wastewater plant upgrade. We are changing over the processing of the biosalts to using a line post-treatment rather than using the evac, I don't want to say incinerator.
The drying, or the dryer.
Yeah, drying. The dryer.
That's right.
And with the layout of the arrangement, the conveyors and everything, we've made sure there's space in there so that these two presses that we have can be renovated. So it's going to open up through the construction process the ability to do that. These, the bearings and the sleeves and everything, and as well as the cloth membranes are under very high stress and tension in order to squeeze the water out of the biosalts. So over a period of time, you need to pull those out and do a lot of bearing replacements. The only way you can do that is you have to slide them out from the side, that full width of that machine, so we'll have that area that will be opened up available to upgrade those. Obviously, it's a crucial part of the overall wastewater treatment process because we've got to take those biosalts that are removed from cleaning up the wastewater and process them so that it can be reused as, in our case, it'll be a Class A biosolts.
How is the dryer going to be removed? Do you have to modify the building to get that thing out of there?
There's a panel on one side that they can remove, and then I'm thinking they'll probably take it out in pieces also.
Okay, so it'll be cut up first.
It's probably scrap metal at this point.
This is a project with, we want to get into design. We've made a lot of progress in upgrading our pump stations, along with the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. This is with Glen Avenue, we're looking at engineering design of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And I think we have this programmed in FY twenty, I think, is what's originally for construction, and doing that. You can see the location of the Glen Avenue lift station is out in the street.
And you can see from that pole, that's where the electrical controls are. So anytime we need to do anything to that station, you have to use a ladder to get up to the electrical controls.
This is another piece of equipment that we're looking to replace is our two-ton sewer jet truck for cleaning sewer lines, clearing blockages in sewers as well as storm drains. It's a nineteen ninety truck, eighty-five thousand miles. Right now, we use it as a backup to the newer truck that we have. But this would be a lease, twenty-four thousand, a little over twenty-four thousand dollar lease on that one. Also in our utility section, we have a dump truck there due for a replacement. Same situation where obviously utility uses truck on a day-to-day basis for excavations and doing repairs to the water and sewer system, but this would also come with a snowplow and salt body so that it can be utilized during our snow events. Similar lease price. Okay, twenty-four inch water main on Gordy Road, this is the construction work on that. Currently, it's in design. This would provide a secondary point of supply from the paleo water plant loop in the distribution system so that the reliability of utilizing our paleo water plant will be sustained, so we don't have to worry about that one line that we have, there was a break in it, losing that whole water supply for that. And CCTV inspection camera used by our utility group. This is, the equipment that we've got is a trailer-mounted unit, you can see the picture there. Again, it's an old unit, it's, can't get parts for it anymore. It has, originally has a little crawler where it would crawl up the line, that's broken, we can't even do that anymore. You basically have to try to feed a line from the sewer line, tie it, and basically drag the thing through.
Want to get a drone?
It's, it literally sort of acts like a drone. I mean, you're talking about technology using VHS cassettes.
Wow.
It's, it's, it is very, one of our, this is probably one of our priority ones that Amanda and I talked about needing. This is a project that we get every once in a while, we need to go through because of the sandy-type soils that we have in our geology here, we have to go back and try to restore these paleo fields that come in and they improve the efficiencies of the well, because over a period of time, they start to clog up a little bit. So it's a project we've got, and this would work, again, our important paleo field, this will be well number two. And then we have the marina. We had put this into our programming and passed CIPs and the administration's looking forward, moving this one ahead with, I think, in concert with all the other improvements that are being planned for the marina. These are the pedestals that provide power and water to the slip holders, updating those with improved lighting and also capability for phone or cable capabilities so that it makes leasing a space there at the marina more attractive. We'll be focusing on, with this first round of pedestals, because this isn't all of them, on the docks that are currently occupied by renters. That's it.
I have a question.
Yes.
In our last coffee with council, you brought up the playground at the waterside playground. They took down the pavilion. And I had suggested, I think I spoke to Debbie Stant downstairs, because she explained the pavilion was unsafe. Then I, the suggestion I had, if we could use Public Works, the carpentry department, if they could build one, or contact maybe parkside students who build, they build houses, if they could build one for, because the neighborhood is calling for that, it was taken down and never replaced. Trying to think about cost effectiveness, you know, make it safe and make it maybe just a little bigger.
There were a couple of things from that discussion. One, I think Debbie had tried, had applied for some open space money for waterside for that. The other thing, we looked at a couple of kits that you can get that we could assemble, and we'd had some interest potentially from Eagle Scouts, that they would be interested in assembling those. So where we would have to buy, we would buy the kit to assemble it, and then they would help put it together. Obviously, we'd probably be assisting as well. That's kind of where we were, so we were waiting to see where we might get luck out with some grant money.
I don't know if it's in this budget or anything, but you want to just do that outside the capital improvement thing?
Yeah. The price of something like that wouldn't fit the CIP, so it would be that when you get into the budget item.
In the budget item, okay. Would it be in, I mean, I ask, is it in the budget?
Geez, I'm going to focus on CIP.
It's just, you don't have to answer me.
Yeah, I think at this.
Don't have to be an answer.
Okay.
You could look at Home Depot, Lowe's, and some of those have grants as well. You know, just email me with that answer. Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of them, well, coming from Lancaster County, there's all those Amish, they'll put the kits together in terms of nice packages.
Mike, one other quick question. We had last talked about the East Main Street flooding issue and Market Street flooding issues as it pertained to the master plan, Main Street Master Plan development, but I'm curious, specifically, there was some discussion both with business owners, property owners down there, and briefly at this table regarding whether or not there could be some sort of backflow preventer put into the CIP and put into future budgets. This was a little less than a year ago. Anything in there for something like that?
We don't have a specific item for that. Well, I think we're waiting for the design evaluation done to see whether the pros and cons of having the backflow valve is really what the answer is as opposed to a capacity issue to carry the stormwater out.
So we were able to hire a consultant to do the study for us.
Okay.
And I got an update this morning and they're getting close to being able to give us recommendations. They're coming back Wednesday to do more survey work. So we should know in a couple of weeks if that will be the right answer.
Okay.
And it would not, it would also not fall in the CIP level based on the estimates I'd gotten before.
It would be small enough to fit in.
They were small enough to fit in budget, and that could be something that comes out of our stormwater utility, our general budget.
And you believe we'll get an answer quick enough to get that in this year's budget?
Well, it could also fall in our general storm drain repairs or our stormwater utility, you know, just general repairs.
Okay, all right. Excellent, thank you. Thank you all. Mr. Cordery, in the interest of time, I don't know if you had anything else planned for us today. Okay, good. The council has this information, we appreciate the presentations. And what I do want to make sure that we discuss at legislative session when we discuss the CIP is the trends and what it means when you were talking about FY nineteen, FY twenty having less capacity. I'd like to understand whether or not that sort of surge of investment meaning is shortchanging us in years to come. I'd like to know what your thoughts are on that.
Okay, sure.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, I appreciate it. And I would like to get council consensus to move this to legislative session in conjunction with our legislative timeline.
Yes.
All right. Get council consensus, I appreciate it. Thank you, and we'll see you all legislative session. Next item on our agenda is the 2015 Northeast Collector Supplemental Ordinance. Mr. Stevenson is out ill, but I'll ask Mr. Lennox and Mr. Markowski to come forward, if you'll join us at the table. Gentlemen, afternoon. Gentlemen, afternoon.
Thank you.
Good, how are you? So.
I'm Stan Markowski.
Yes.
I've been in front of the council over the last 15 years. I'm not sure if I had a chance to meet you folks. Originally in 1999, I started building the Milpon Village Apartments. And proud that we built it and still own it. We just finished the Addison Court Apartments. We just got the CO on the last building today, so good for the building department working with us. So that's, that's really good. And, you know, we've been instrumental in all that commercial stuff around there, the Hampton Inn and the Bob Evans and the Toys R Us. We developed Golden Corral, all this stuff, they attracted trailer supply, all that good stuff. So needless to say, it's been a pleasure working with the city in the last 15 years. And the opportunity to purchase the Atlet Farms community came up. And we didn't realize that it was not just a land purchase, but it was a complicated financial situation and the TIF and all that type of stuff. So we're really experts in doing development. So I've been getting an education the last year in reference to the TIF. And working with staff, looking forward to bringing some, finishing that community the way it should be because it's a great location.
I have a couple of questions if I can. First of all, thank you for your investment in our community, we appreciate it. Are you from the area?
No, I'm actually originally from Montreal, Canada. I immigrated to Florida in 1969. And I've been working up and down the east coast of the United States since the 70s.
Well, we're doubly grateful to your investment in Salisbury. Mr. Lennox, if I can. It's my recollection that there, there was an approval not long ago before the planning commission of an updated, was it a site plan?
Yes.
Updated, okay, updated plat.
Yes, sir.
Do you happen to have that information?
I do have it with me. Just a little bit of background on Isla Farm itself might be helpful. The property was annexed to the city back in the mid 80s. At the time, it was brought in with a planned development district that obviously had never been implemented. We were approached, the city was approached, I think probably about 2005, 2006 initially, about reactivating that project. The Northeast Collector Road was ultimately built with the support of a TIF. I know Mr. Cordry is here, he and the finance department are very familiar with how that's been set up and any sort of implications for how this action may or may not affect, affect the city. But in terms of the land development, the, the new developer looked to rearrange some of the uses. It's, it's a mix on paper out there of apartments, townhouses and single-family, some of which has been started, a great deal of which still is yet to be built. The Collector Road was built through the use of the TIF and as was intended to be, when the project did go under, the city was protected. And so did not fall liable to any of those obligations. At this point, Mr. Markowski paid a visit to the planning commission in the fall. That was, you know, largely as it is today, to introduce himself, to, to let the city know that they're interested in proceeding and that they would be making a change in the first phase to eliminate basically the townhouse concept and substitute apartments. There's also a single-family phase at this point that I understand is still intended to proceed and that is not proposed to be changed.
How large is the single-family component? Do you recall?
I think so, overall. Some of which are across the, the road from the, the main development and some in a future phase, sort of buried back in, in the woods.
I realize this is just at, you know, the, the very beginning of the process, but, so if this question is difficult to answer, I understand. But could you give us a general sense of timeline, you know, when you're thinking about, you know, if, if everything falls into line when you're thinking about starting construction and?
We'd like to apply, we've already applied for some permits.
Okay.
In the interim, that we're able to have the permits reissued. So with water, sewer, some of that was already approved and we're going to be able to live with that design. We've also worked with the engineering department. There's some failures out there and we've notified what they are and we've said that we're going to, we're going to fix those. Even though they're city streets and they're owned by the city, we made an arrangement with them to fix certain items. And they, interns said, okay, we can do these permits. You know, we went back and came up with a very good arrangement. It's the same, we've had a good working relationship with them for a long time. So timing is, basically the timing has been slightly delayed just because of this financial need for you folks to embrace it and let it go. And, but hypothetically, if we can get it all done by May or June, we'll look into, please start applying for permits. It's, it's the time you finish with the state and the new erosion, the new erosion control.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The new erosion control requirements now. So that, the whole community has to be reevaluated for that, which we already have our engineers working on it. We do use the local, all local engineers and surveyors. And so I would like to think that within nine months or so, we can get, get things going.
Excellent.
That's, that's normal, that's the normal timing to go through the process.
Mr. Day, in answer to your initial question, the development is already today approved for 629 housing units, 76 single-family. And right now, the rest is a mix of duplex townhouses and what are called condominium units in zoning, it's the apartment style. And the understanding is that they would stay below that cap. All of the uses are as allowed in the zoning and would just be before the planning commission for the change in the site plan.
I, I guess my question is, and forgive me if this has already been asked by the planning commission, but is, is the market such that you can, you can work toward build-out over some number of years?
As you know, we've just built the Addison Court Apartments. We leased today, we leased 206 of our apartments and we only had 221 in line. Now we have the last building online. The leasing period went through the winter, which is the worst time of the year. So we're very pleased with that. Milpon Village has been 97% leased and occupied for over 10 years now. And so we are very, very familiar with the market absorption, the type of product that the community has embraced. And so we're very confident that that will work.
When you build quality, people want to live there.
That's right, that's right. You build quality and you have a great location, people want to be there. Also, being in the city rather than being in the outskirts, you have all the city services, which is an added bonus to any, for any, for any developer. The single-family portion, I think is now, I think we're ready. We're ready for some single-family. And we, we plan to get that portion started at the same time. So the villa concept is something more for seniors. We're still working on different types of product in the eastern shore. Looking in Delaware and Virginia and Maryland and we're looking all over to see what type of product would really work well. So that, that will be our third phase, apartments and the single-family. We do feel there is some absorption and there's a need for it. And we did a lot of absorption studies recently for Atlet, excuse me, Addison Court. So yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, good. And then the other question I had, just with respect to the bond, is I just want to make sure that this is clear. And Mr. Cordry, we might need you to go up here if, if Jack and Mr. Markowski can. The bond proceeds of the original bond, was that, were those only for the Northeast Collector Road or were they for other roads and other public facilities as well?
My understanding is it was for the public facilities associated with the Northeast Collector Road.
Okay, so, so everything from lighting to stormwater management, full-depth construction?
Yes, sir.
Got it. Is that, your understanding, Keith?
I've never had that, that discussion, so I can't confirm that.
Okay. All of you were here before I was, so you tell me.
It was fully funded and all the improvements were done.
Okay.
Not for the internal, to distinguish.
Not for the internal public facility? And that was really my question, so not for the roads within the development?
That's correct.
Okay, understood. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah, that's why I was responsible.
Got it, got it.
It's his privilege to build those for you.
Understood, understood. Okay, other questions for Mr. Markowski, Mr. Lennox or Mr. Cordry? Yeah.
See you again on the planning commission.
Glad to see things moving forward.
Be interested to see the layout of where, where the mix is going to go, the homes, the apartments.
I can show you something now if you like.
That's all right, we're, we're really short on time.
We'll bring it to the council.
Yeah, let's, let's do that, you know, we'll bring you back to council.
Yeah, we'll have slides, we'll give you a full presentation.
That'd be great.
That'd be fantastic.
Very good. Good for marketing too.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for coming all this way. Great, thank you all, meeting you too. So with that, I'll, is there a council consensus to move this to legislative session?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Okay, next item on our agenda is the MWQFA loan for the wastewater treatment plant. I wanted to make sure this stayed on before I left because it's not a little project.
No, and I want to give an update, I'm anxious to give you all this update. We're here to talk about the ordinance to set the maximum loan amount for the treatment plant upgrade. And of course, we started this process with the bond attorney some months ago, so we put in an estimated amount. Fortunately, we opened bids on Thursday of last week, so I can give you a little bit of an update on how realistic this number is. So I'm, I'm very pleased to give you the bid results. And of course, we will come before you for an award of bids officially in a couple of weeks for a council meeting. But just for the purpose of this discussion, our construction cost estimate was always in the range of about $54 million. And I'm pleased to report that our low bidder has a bid of $50,150,000. And we had three bids, two in the 50 and one in the 51 million range, and then we had one bid that was significantly higher. So we had three very close together in the 50 and 51 million dollar range, so that's great news. So we are working with the state and finalizing our funding package. Mike and I had a conference call this morning with MDE. This, this ordinance, as written, set the maximum loan amount not to exceed $38 million. That is still realistic with where bids have come in. As Keith mentioned earlier, this project is funded through the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration with a 0% interest rate loan on a 20-year term. We also have BNR and ENR grants. The whole project in total is about 42% grant-eligible. So all in all, including design, we will be receiving almost $26 million worth of grants, the rest being loans. Noted in the cover memo, I said that the entire project was about $68,679,000. With the bids coming in about $4 million less, our total project costs, including design spent to date, is right now about $64.4 million is what we're projecting. And that does include 5% contingency and 3% administrative costs. So at this time, what you have before you as far as the ordinance was prepared by the bond attorney and reviewed by the city attorney's office. The actual loan amount will get set later with the resolution after this ordinance gets passed. This is just one step in the process of getting all the loan and grants lined up. So as this goes forward, if it goes forward with $38 million as a max, that is still a realistic level and it will get defined to the actual amount later on, once the Maryland Board of Public Works approves the financing package and that type of thing. But at, at this time, we're looking at about $36 million worth of loans total. And like I said, that does include contingency.
Well, I'm just glad to hear that we're, the, the bids came in low and we're hopefully going to save a good bit of money.
We're very pleased to report that. And getting four bids, we're happy to do that. We pre-qualified contractors, so we had seven that were pre-qualified to bid and four bid on that. So we were pleased to have that amount of competition. We also opened bids for construction management and inspection services, so we have a selection committee reviewing those and that'll come before you as well. But that's also factored already into these eligibility calculations.
You know, I, I don't know what the conversations were like at this table many years ago when decisions were made about a wastewater treatment plant design that did not work. But I, you know, I have the utmost confidence in our team at Public Works today and the administration. I'm, I'm very confident that we're making the right decisions. Pre-qualifying contractors, I think, is logical and sensible.
Oh, it really, it took a lot of burden off of opening the bids on Thursday because we knew that every firm that applied was going to be qualified already. And the, the apparent low bidder does only water and wastewater projects, so this is, this is their bread and butter.
Excellent.
There's nothing experimental, this is tried and true.
Tried and true.
We are going down the road more traveled.
We really are, and, and as Mike had mentioned with the belt filter presses, we're reusing as much of the equipment and tanks as we can. So over half of that previous upgrade is getting reused there. The big tanks out by West Side Little League are being reused but cut in half. So you'll see the, the height come down dramatically, but the tanks are still being reused. So we're reusing as much as we possibly can on the site.
Great, very good. The one thing I noticed in this ordinance and the previous one, several years ago, we did away with the, the opening line about the mayor and the council and this again says, "An ordinance of the council of the city of Salisbury." And we just went with, "An ordinance of the city of Salisbury." And I go to set in a bond ordinance too, so I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Where the origin of this is, but it's coming probably from the same place.
From our bond attorney, so we'll mention that too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it probably requires a full restructure of this first couple of lines, but. Other questions? Thank you for your hard work on this.
Thank you very much.
Given the time and given that we've got some guests in the room, I'd like to make another switch in the schedule and just move the Chop Tank capacity fee waiver and urban B legislation up and push curfew legislation underneath. I hope Colonel Monshane, you won't mind that. I appreciate it. And I assume you're presenting the curfew legislation?
Yes.
Okay. And so we'll now do the Chop Tank capacity fee waiver. So, Mr. Mols?
All right, this, this is a project which, working with Chop Tank Electric with their new development of their facility on Wallston Switch Road, we've been able to work with their connection to the sewer line, which they have to do, and with us having an issue with a pinch valve on our line, two projects being right next to each other, that we've been able to find a way to get, meet both of our needs and saving the city some money. And then what we're proposing is crediting those savings with Chop Tank, with their contractor, who had obtained competitive bids for the work, to be able to do their connection and remove that pinch valve that's been causing us headaches for some time. So what we did is we worked with Chop Tank. We'd gotten some estimates, a cost of what it would cost for us to do the work, with about $62,300. And because they'll be doing that work in the vicinity of it, and because of the depth, there's a lot of dewatering issue associated with that. So both excavations that would be involved, the, the dewatering could, could handle both of those. So we asked Chop Tank to include that, remove all the valve in their scope of work. It was competitively bid. Chop Tank selected their lowest bidder and included the bid to remove the pinch valve for $35,000. So there's, like I said, significant savings in eliminating the separate mobilization, demobilization, dewatering charges associated with the project, both projects together. So what we did was we worked out an agreement proposal to have Chop Tank Electric do the work not to exceed $35,000. And under this agreement, Chop Tank will be paying capacity fees, an amount of about $38,863. So we proposed an agreement resolution to credit the $35,000 cost for the work that would be done for removal of the pinch valve against those capacity fees.
Questions for Mr. Mols? I think this is another, you know, great project happening underway in Salisbury, anything we can do to help it forward?
What is, I do have one question, the, the timeline of their mobilization to go under Wallston Switch as compared to where Tri-County is in the process? Are they, are we way ahead with the Chop Tank portion?
Chop Tank's moving on a much longer, quicker schedule.
Okay.
Amanda's been talking with the Tri-County.
Just looking for some more economies of scale, mobilization.
And Chop Tank is, is already mobilized and doing construction on their own site. So they have the contractor under contract, ready to come across Wallston Switch Road. Tri-County is still in preliminary stages. We've received schematic drawings from them, but they weren't as far along.
Okay. Okay.
I wasn't sure how far they'd worked, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the update. Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we'll next go to the Urban Bee Legislation discussion.
You want consensus?
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, I'm in such hurry.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Council consensus? Excellent, there is. All right, we'll move that to legislative session. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is the Urban Bee Legislation.
You're gonna skip the curfew?
All right. Okay. Colonel. We're going to Urban Bee Legislation first and then we'll go to the curfew discussion. Good afternoon, how are you?
Dave Shanks.
Hello, guys.
Afternoon. How are we doing, gentlemen?
Our senior editor, also Dave Shanks, would be able to assist us in discussion.
Excellent.
I got charged with researching the proposed bee ordinance as well as the urban chicken ordinance pretty much at the same time. I was charged with checking with other agencies around to see who handles what and how they deal with it. And the results were pretty much the same. Ocean City, for instance, does not allow either. Worcester County has no policies on either. Somerset County only deals with dogs and they cover any complaints from Princess Anne as well. Checked with Princess Anne and they don't have any ordinances on either one, although they say that they are aware of people in Princess Anne that do have them. But the police department doesn't cover any complaints regarding those. Wacomico County only deals with domestic animals. Dorchester County only deals with dogs. And Arundel County does not deal with bees and permits for chickens are obtained through planting and zoning. The city of Annapolis does not have a bee policy. However, they do have an extensive permitting process for chickens. Baltimore City, however, does have a bees ordinance. They have fifteen licensed people doing beekeeping in their city that they're aware of. They do the initial inspection prior to issuing the permit. And after the inspection, any complaints about them are referred to the Maryland Department of Agriculture. The supervisor I spoke to can only remember one nuisance complaint on the bees, which is associated with an individual who was trying to have them a hive in a condominium-type setting, which was causing a bit of a problem.
I would think so.
Baltimore does charge for these permits. In regards to these, I did talk to the Maryland Department of Agriculture. Anyone that wants to do this has to be first registered through the MDA. They send someone out to inspect the property using their standards. They also have someone who receives and handles complaints throughout the state of Maryland. When they receive a complaint, an inspector responds to research it. If the complaint is not addressed by the keeper, they will revoke the keeper's permit and subsequently revoke the hives. They have personnel in place to do that as well. It would be our wish that if we have any complaints, that we work with the MDA and sort of be a go-between between the citizens and the MDA and refer them appropriately and maybe speak to MDA and tell them what we're seeing before they send someone all the way here. I think we'd have minimal involvement, really. I don't think we should have any involvement with live bees. Maybe just doing the inspection process beforehand and then referring complaints appropriately.
Okay. Yeah, I think if I remember back to our previous conversations, the biggest question was was really what would be appropriate as far as violations. I mean, it's not as if there's a occupancy permit you can pull or a building permit you can pull or. So if there was some way to actually, you know.
You might get into what someone would consider a nuisance-type complaint, but then I think you would have to define what the nuisance is.
Right.
And the dispatchers would need to be made aware of this so they wouldn't send us these calls without thinking about it.
You know, and I think if, you know, if we were to adopt the ordinance as presented with, you know, hives having to be a certain distance from property lines, having to be in compliance with the apiary inspection portions of the Maryland code, all of this registered with MDA the way it was supposed to be. And if anything that violated that was a civil infraction, you know, the, you know, we would just need to figure out what the appropriate consequences of that civil infraction are. You know, and what would cause that. I mean, if I get stung by a bee and I know my neighbor's got bees.
Do you have a complaint?
Do I have a complaint? Can I?
Have you personally?
I know it was your bee.
I can tell you this, I have many parents that have dogs behind fence lines complaining about kids throwing rocks at the dogs. What if a child does that to somebody who's been in the city? Where do you go from there?
Right.
That could be an issue. And I think that's kind of a self-directing problem, probably.
Probably.
What would you do at that point? And if you have somebody that, whose child did that and they were allergic.
To us a lot.
Sure.
They try to sue, what happens then? Who are they gonna go after?
It's a fair point. Well, you know, and I think this is the reason to establish, you know, we had some discussion about this at coffee with your council the other night. And someone asked the question, is, if there's no law on this, can't I do it now? And the answer is yes, I'm sure you can, but can you do it responsibly?
You have to go through the MDA to do it legally. And do we, do we really need to have ourselves involved other than to go through a second permitting process?
Well, and perhaps we don't even want to create that local process. I mean, maybe we only want to set stricter regulations as far as the relationship between one property and another and refer everything else back to state regulations.
The MDA's made it really easy for us in that they have the personnel that handles all this stuff.
And they actually will come down and.
Yes. They'll come down and inspect it.
Pre-inspection and problem inspection.
They'll remove the abandoned ones and do all of it.
That was the other issue too, discussed, was in the case of abandoned property or something like that.
Okay.
Someone gets involved and decides they don't want to do it, stops.
Sure.
What happens to all the stuff?
Okay.
Most importantly, the bees.
So getting back to it, do we really need an ordinance from the city? You know, the Department of Agriculture assesses an annual fee for permits related to keeping of bees. Department of Agriculture inspects the beehives annually and responds to any citizen complaints at any time.
But do they have any placement regulations and size of law restrictions? That's the.
I've got their whole ordinance right here.
They don't have, and this was what I found when talking to Berlin and Snow Hill, was that they didn't feel like, the reason that they passed the ordinance, their ordinances, was because they didn't feel like there was enough geographic or zoning restriction provided. But, you know, I mean, that's up for debate.
But that would be the extent of what we're trying to do.
What's that?
But that would be the extent of what we're trying to do.
That is the extent of, yeah, I think we can limit it to that, certainly. And we've got a few other things, provision of water, you know. That's really it, and then the violations component of it, and that's really it. And we could even reduce those two pieces if we needed to.
When it comes to the zoning-type issues and how many boxes you have to have per size of property, would that be a building and housing?
I think so, so I saw in the memo the reference to building house, you know, or building permitting and inspections. And I do think, I think that makes a lot of sense that they would be the appropriate. And we're talking about, you know, constructing something or having a structure of some type. And I do think there is a little bit of difference between this and, say, you know, a doghouse or something like that. So I could, I could see them being the appropriate place for.
Of course, inspections, which are being.
They do those in the spring, according to the state act here. They inspect in every spring.
Okay.
It appears Baltimore City is, I'm sure it's based on population.
They're the only ones that seem to regulate it anywhere close to here.
To how we are proposing to?
Right.
Okay.
Everybody else just has no parts of it, they're aware of it, but they.
And I saw that.
Did you get closer to the mic, they're not picking up?
I'm sorry, yeah. They, everybody else appears to just not have any involvement in it or they're aware of it and they don't regulate it.
Pretty much what we've done over the past forever.
There's probably somebody doing it in.
Oh, I know for sure there are, I know at least three places where there are bees kept in backyards and.
Yeah, I don't have a lot yet outnumbered.
So if we, if we then made no reference to registration, which are, you know, the portion of the code here that references registration only says that they have to comply with Maryland, Maryland code. And if we made, you know, well, the other piece is the hive location.
Oh, four oh.
The manner in which it's marked with a name and address.
State requirement of two.
Flyways.
That's definitely a state requirement.
Okay, I mean, so maybe the flyways and provision of water and beekeeping equipment, although. I think you could probably reduce this thing to the six point zero six, zero six zero and zero four zero, maybe zero three zero. And the only question I would have then would be about violations, six point zero six, point one one zero.
Why do we need to, I have a question.
Yes.
If you have the housing inspectors running around and getting in people's backyards, there's some kind of identification mark, or like you said, you know, three in the city of Salisbury, correct? You said you knew three in the city of Salisbury.
Three what?
People have beehives.
There are at least three people.
Or say, I don't need to know their names, but say if you have three and if the housing inspector happens to find one, wouldn't that be a way to see if they're registered with MDA? The housing inspectors go anyway in your backyards and your roofs and everywhere else on your property, wouldn't that be the one that we could come in to find if they're actually registered?
But the housing inspector would only be there for some other reason.
Well, if he happens to see, uh, uh, somebody's got bees. Not necessarily violation, so we'd be aware of who has the bees. I really don't think we should get involved in this stuff. I mean, if there's no law saying they can't have it in the yard, backyard, somebody's got to see if they're meeting, following the rules and regulations. If you just happen to see if one is in the yard, maybe you could find out, have the address, contact that person, see if they're meeting the requirements and let them know what the state requirements are as a courtesy.
Well, here's what we heard from the actual attendees of the beekeeper, the regional beekeeper meetings the other night at coffee with your council. Because if you remember, they came.
Yes.
And what they said was that by, by doing this, one of the effects, one of the likely effects would be to actually cause people to even consider it and think about it. And if we were, went through the process of adopting some regulations, some left and right limits, it would also have the effect of encouraging them to do it right if they were gonna do it. What I think we should be doing is talking about how to do it and how to do it in a way that's not terribly cumbersome on the city.
I tend to agree with it. I look at the legislation, what I want to do is minimize it to the possible, you know, to the nth degree. And at the same time, make a declaration essentially that the city is bee-friendly or beekeeping-friendly. And that's pretty much the message I want to make.
Make it what friendly?
Beekeeping-friendly. All right, I have a suggestion. I suggest we strike six point zero six, point zero five zero registration, which is duplicative of the state. Strike six point zero six, point zero eight zero, which is water. Six point zero six, point zero nine zero, equipment. And six point zero six, point one zero zero, health department. And then we focus on six point zero six, point one one zero violations. And also consider the role that the, the city would have and maybe name the housing inspector explicitly as the responsible inspection authority.
Is this prior to them getting the bees or after?
Well, you know, I think really would be, I think the appropriate role would be in tandem with the state. So if you're gonna come in our jurisdiction, you know, if you're going to be doing this, if, you know, you register MDA and the city of Salisbury, housing inspector will come and either give you the thumbs up or thumbs down.
Didn't you want to strike the flyways as well, zero seven zero?
Uh, no. Flyways.
Because that was already covered in MDA's.
I don't know that it is.
It is.
It is?
Was the water source also covered in?
And we struck that. All right, I'll suggest striking flyways too, if that's already covered. So it would consist of six point zero, six point zero four zero, six point zero, six point zero six zero, everything that precedes zero four zero as well.
Thirty, forty, sixteen.
And.
I'm good with that.
Okay. So a violation of this chapter may be remedied as provided in section six point zero five of this title. When a violation of this chapter is committed and provided, it is not charged in conjunction with another criminal offense and does not constitute a fourth or succeeding notice of violation within a twenty-four hour, excuse me, twenty-four-month period, an authorized agent in the city shall issue a civil notice of violation to such violator in lieu of a misdemeanor citation. So civil, civil infraction. Mark, what are, you know, what are our abilities to hold someone accountable? Or, you know, what can accompany that? You know, a fine of up to five hundred?
And there's some, there's some language, I think, in the code that, with different levels of fines, but I think under the charter, we can impose a fine of up to a thousand, I think.
Okay. Well, so if we're not.
Have to double-check that.
If we strike the registration, here's my only thought. If we strike the registration piece and, you know, even though we're not creating a registration system, if we strike that piece from the ordinance, we can't even pretend that we would pull someone's ability to have the, you know. I mean, if you're not, if you're not active in the provision of the registration, how can you revoke it?
Other than reporting to MDA?
We can report, we can work with MDA, I guess, is the only recourse. It's just not a very official recourse.
And issue citations if they're not registered, so.
What's that?
And issue a citation if they're not registered and haven't done it correctly.
So that would be an argument for keeping.
If they're not registered with us, then I don't know.
Zero five zero. Just, just the reference to registration. All right, so is there council consensus at least to strike the section on flyways, water, equipment and health department?
Yes.
As duplicative?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Did you also strike hives?
I did not, because that's the, that's the portion in which we are defining within the city of Salisbury, the distance, the number of colonies kept and the distance from other.
From people's homes and stuff.
Distance from property lines.
The other topic that came up, and it does say specifically in here honeybees, but it doesn't say only honeybees. It says no Africanized bees. Does the, does MDA regulate what kind of bees they can raise?
They were specifically talking to me about honeybees. They did not mention anything else, but I would assume that, and I have the lady's number, I can certainly call her and find that out. But I would assume they're just speaking in terms of honeybees.
I mean, I'm not an expert here, but from my reading, that is not like a large generalized, there's only, that is one species. The common honeybee is one specific.
When we're talking about the common.
Yeah, the common honeybee is one, that is all that is allowed here. The honeybee means the Apis mellifera species.
Yeah, that one.
It's a common honeybee, and that's it.
The reason I asked about hives is I've just been made aware that there are new designs on hives that do not require you to pull the frames out to get the honey. So I'm wondering if we might change that six zero A.
Change? What now?
And just make it honeybee colony.
Oh, I see.
Honeybee colonies should be kept in hives, which shall be kept in sound and usable condition. With removable frames.
All right, can we, yeah, can we strike with removable frames?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Strike that.
I actually saw something in here.
606060.
606060A.
About that. Moveable frames, every person engaged in beekeeping shall provide movable frames, and all hives and shall cause the bees in the hives to construct brood control, brood combs in the frame so the frame may be removed without injury to other combs in the hive. So that's a state regulation that has to be moved.
Okay. All right, so we'll...
We'll leave it there.
If we remove reference to it, then if the state eventually changes their regulations, we're ahead of you. If we just remove reference to it, even if it's required in the state, it may be required for the near term, but we can, you know, catch up with technology.
So we can leave that open?
We'll be ahead of technology.
If we take out the words "with removable frames," we'll still be covered?
Yes. Yeah, I think so. And they'll still have to comply with MDA regulations. So last issue, just on 110 violations, shall issue a civil notice of violation, which may include penalty up to, of a fine up to $500.
I'd say up to $500.
What's that?
I'd say up to $500.
Up to? And just, that allows us to have an explicit cap on, and obviously, four succeeding notice of violation in a 20-month period, 24-month period could rise to a criminal offense.
That's a lot higher than the animal control fees.
Uh, what is?
Yeah, we'll see to be looked at.
We'll be talking about those before long.
But we will actually be seeing that, I think, in the next month or two.
To me, the whole animal control.
We've been asking for a while to get those fixed.
Not without written notice, and there's only certain things we can inspect for.
All right, is there counsel consensus to move the amended ordinance, proposed ordinance to Mr. Tillman for editing for legislative session?
Yes.
Yes.
That one hurt, didn't it?
It hurt me.
It hurt to say yes, didn't it?
Well, you have your two, so. I don't think we need to be in it, but yes.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is curfew legislation, but I'm gonna take a two-minute recess, because I have to depart, but thank you, thank you both.
Well, that's great timing. So that's...